Okay.
Cable, one of the cables out.
Maybe.
No?
I don't know if somebody hit a pillow, who knows what.
Nobody's contacted, who's the person?
Yeah.
Okay.
Recording? Okay. Okay. So, just a disclaimer, the live feed is not working tonight, but we have been recorded for later. So, call the meeting to get to order for the selectmen's meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for April 9th, 2019. We have some special guests here tonight, the Odyssey of the Mind team. And we always had our selectmen's meeting with the salute to the flag, so I'd like them to come up and lead us. Step right up here, girls. Stat off.
I am Sophie.
Stat off with the pledge of allegiance, please.
I'm so bad at this. Did I speak into the microphone?
Just, just, just pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, ever and ever.
Okay, and we have the Odyssey of the Mind here. They have been diligently working to move forward again this year. And why don't you give us an update as to where you sit?
So, I am Sophie and I was part of the Odyssey of the Mind team since, for competitions, since 4th grade.
Wow, in what grade are you in now?
Um, 6th.
6th, wow.
Remember to speak loud, okay?
I am Summer, I've been Odyssey, I've been in Odyssey of the Mind for two years counting this year.
I'm Jamie and I have been competing in Odyssey since 1st grade in primary and I am a drummer in the skit this year.
I'm JC, I've been in Odyssey since 1st grade also and this year I was the team's tower builder.
I am Jacob and I have been doing Odyssey for three years since 2nd, ah, 1st grade.
Great. That's great.
So you've had tryouts, right?
So what happened was the core of the team's been together for about three years now and whenever someone leaves, the school gives us a list of kids who want to join the team and, you know, the kids just say, okay, let's take these ones and they fill their team back up. They can have up to seven kids on the team. Last year when they went to the world finals, they came in 16th out of 50. That's pretty good for a small town act in there.
Yes, it is.
And this year, we were actually quite surprised how well they did. They're in Division 2 now, which is 6th through 8th grade, but it's decided by the highest grade on the team. We have two 4th graders and two 5th graders and three 6th graders. So the 4th, 5th, and 6th graders on our team are actually up against 6th through 8th graders.
Wow.
And they came in first at regionals and first at states.
Wow.
Wow.
Congratulations.
So where do you go from here?
Go ahead, you go.
So we go on to Worlds after this in Michigan State. And we were hoping to fundraise at the town hall to help us go on a road trip to get to Michigan State for Worlds. So we may, so we wanted to do maybe a donut sale here this upcoming weekend, I believe. And we will, and
Can drives and?
Can, like, stuff like can drives. What was it? And just to hopefully help us get on our way to go to Worlds.
Will you be driving?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We did it last year.
Yep.
And we luckily fundraised enough to go.
And are you allowed to explain the project without giving any secrets?
Sophie, you can explain, don't go in too much detail about how the tower was built because that would give away secrets. But you can explain the other stuff as much as you want.
I was just gonna say, I know for a fact we're not allowed to perform the skit with recording or anywhere until June 1st. But we did, but I can't explain the problem since that, I believe, is open. Well, you had to come up with a carnival idea. It had to involve a carnival where you had to toss your towel and then place weights on a false towel that had to be less than 15
More than eight inches.
More than eight inches and less than, well, 15 grams or less, I believe, is that what I just see? And our tower this year held 585 pounds at states.
Are you kidding?
Last year at World's Tower only got credit for 560 pounds. So then, this is, so this is a nice jump up to 585 pounds.
Wow.
All thanks to JC.
JC. Now, you said that, and I talked to, you said that you couldn't do this if it's being filmed, but there was some talk about you guys possibly coming and showing us the skit next week as long as we weren't recording it. Is that, that accurate?
Yes.
Is that something the board would be interested in? So essentially the first part of the, you know, first part of the meeting, we wouldn't have Eric film.
We have to verify that with Odyssey just to
Okay.
be sure. So there is a chance I'll have to kind of, you know, say no. But my understanding of the rules is it cannot be filmed and put online.
Yeah.
Sure. Yeah, I'd love to see it.
Would you girls and gentlemen want to do that? Come in next week if you could?
I don't know about these guys. At the moment, at the moment, two of our teammates are not here.
So you could have a discussion.
Yeah.
Decide as a group.
Yeah, then just let us know.
Well, congratulations.
We are very proud of you and from my office standpoint, we're gonna start tomorrow collecting for you. We'll give all of our Neighbors Helping Neighbors donations earmarked for you guys for the next couple of weeks while you fundraise and we'll see if we can get people to round up for your cause, so hopefully that will help some, but we are very proud of you.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Big accomplishment, especially two years in a row.
I know.
She's our coach this year.
Good job.
I kind of put her on the spot this year, I'm like, I need an assistant coach, I'm like, Lisa! So we're actually, she's my co-coach, I don't call her assistant, I call her, she's an equal.
So in addition to the project of the building and performing, you also have to pass spontaneous problems?
Oh yeah, you want to talk about spontaneous, don't tell them the problems.
So, we are not allowed to talk about regionals or states spontaneous until June 1st, where all Worlds has ended, because we do not want to give it away, because we, some people might share it with people who might let other teams find out.
You can let them know what it is though.
But
I mean, not, you can explain what spontaneous is, okay?
So pretty much spontaneous is a problem or question that can either be hands-on, where you have to build something or stuff like that, or complete a problem using like, with like, building and figuring out a problem. And, or it could be verbal, where you ask a question, usually where you have to answer, like, some, here's a practice one we did. A word rhyming with an animal. You would, and you would have to come up with like fox box, stuff like that. And you have, could not skip in most problems. And then there's combination where you usually have to like, well, it's a combination of verbal and hands-on spontaneous.
Wow.
Spontaneous questions, they do not know ahead of time. They walked into the room, I'm not even allowed in the room, I've never been in the room. They go in and then the judges ask them on the spot, nobody knows ahead of time what it is.
Yeah.
So it's definitely spontaneous. They ask them up to something quick.
So it proves how well the team works together.
Right.
Absolutely. And they do get points on their teamwork.
Yep.
Thanks.
You want to speak?
Okay, so pretty much, I forgot to mention, in verbal you are not allowed to usually talk to each other during think time. There is a certain designated time for thinking in both hands-on and, well, in most hands-on and verbal and even combination. You usually get a certain amount of time to think before you have to answer the question or test something and stuff like that and figure, and get scored, that usually happens in hands-on. So pretty much, but in hands-on, you're usually allowed to talk to your teammates unless the rules say otherwise, so.
Great. Excuse me. Well, any other questions?
No.
No, great, no, it's a huge accomplishment, we thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
So, thank you and
Good luck.
Like Jennifer says, we're gonna move forward and, you know, she'll spearhead anything from this side.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I know this isn't normally allowed.
Your name, sir?
Dennis Long.
Thank you.
I would just like to say to these kids how amazing it is for this little town to have such talented children for two years in a row going to world championships. It's absolutely amazing and the community should be very, very proud of these kids. I know I am.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Dennis. Great. Anything else you folks want to add? No?
I would just like to ask if we have a position to go ahead and run, we have to go
Up to the mic, please, just.
I would just ask if anybody would be offended if we ran, because we have to get to the school board meeting next.
Nope, you're done.
Nope.
Yep, thank you, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it and look forward to hearing how you're making out.
Thank you very much.
Definitely keep us posted, so. Thanks and drive safe, it's messy out there, looks more like December.
What is this?
Yeah, it's beautiful for December.
Yeah.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to add D under new business for the liquor licenses.
Okay.
And then approve it as, with that addition.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Moved and seconded and we're adding D under new business for the liquor licenses.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Nope, call for vote, all in favor, all opposed. Minutes of the last meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Was Kim not here? You weren't here for the last meeting?
Actually, I wasn't, but I did read it.
You can second it, though, it's
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
No.
Call for vote, all in favor, all opposed. Okay, department heads and committee chair updates. Do we have any this week?
They stop coming, I stop reminding them.
That sounds okay. They don't want to be out in front.
I sent out the year's schedule like you told me to and
Nope, that's fine, it's, I mean, it's all, it's only for their benefits, to be in front, get some word out as to what's going on with the, with the department heads and the committee chairs, so we've had some come in. Okay, we'll move on to old business. And we have EMA Director, 911 Coordinator. You were going to look into, you were sending an email off.
Yes, and it is a conflict of interest, you are correct.
I thought it would be, okay. So that eliminates any of us from being the EMA Director.
So now we'll start advertising.
Yep, sounds good.
And 911, we're still working with code enforcement, once his full staff is back from vacation, we'll tackle that.
Sure. District 1 equipment, I'll make another phone call to the former District 1. And, I mean, last time I spoke to him, he was waiting for the snow to leave and here it is, April 9th, and it's snowing like a son of a gun outside, so, but I will get on him and we'll, we'll see if we can't get the rest of that back. Fitness Center?
So you guys had a walkthrough, as I understand it, on a Sunday, looking at the building across the street with the rec
We did.
and the fire department.
We did.
And as I understand it, it's been decided that it's probably not the best fit?
No, the size of the building isn't, it's, the building is quite broken up inside and to try to revamp it, it's really not feasible. The upstairs of the building, the stairs are not, not compatible to being able to go up and use. And the second floor of that building was never designed really to be used much more than for storage, but even the downstairs isn't that compatible for
So does that mean that you're not looking to move the equipment over there or use it as rec center?
Well, not use it as a rec center anyway, leave it the way it is for the fire department to utilize.
Okay.
And as far as, we, the rec, the rec committee is, what, saying to form a subcommittee maybe to look into running the
Well, I think that was with the idea that it was gonna be over there and that was part of the committee.
Yeah.
I mean, that was all part of one thing.
But I think they were, yeah, we also came over and looked at the, the fitness center and there was some thought that that building may be partially being able to use for the rec center, for the rec department. So, it's kind of in their hands now, they know that the other building is, is off the plate. This building here is a possibility, there may be some other plans coming years down the road for something else.
So if they decided they wanted to use that building for the rec, a rec center and wanted you to move the equipment back over there, would you?
I mean, if we move it back over there, then we're doing away with the, with the gym.
Right.
Altogether.
Right.
The gym would be canceled out, which I'm still not in favor of really, I mean, there's a lot of people that use the gym here in town. So, I'd like to see the, the rec center, the, the rec department kind of take care of the overseeing of that, except for the financial part of it, which you handle. So, but try to get as much of it off your plate as we can and let them handle it as far as showing people how to use the equipment and that sort of thing.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. So, okay. So keep that on for one more week, just to see if we get anything back from them.
Yeah, the rec committee meets next Wednesday and maybe, I don't think they've brought it back to their committee yet to discuss either.
Probably not, no.
So we could, you know, even take it off for next week, put it back on for the following week.
Okay.
Okay. Row Bridge?
That's a lingering item regarding the barriers.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We did speak to Mr. Lertorno today and he indicated that he'd been waiting for the ice to melt, which finally happened. And, you know, a couple of hours ago, he felt like, he thought he could probably have them out there by the end of this week. But part of that conversation was regarding the rain that we were getting tonight, so as we look around
As we, right now, we're at two or three inches and accumulating, so, okay.
I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know what to say, it's just, he says he'll get to it as soon as he can.
Yep, I did speak to him a week or so ago and he was concerned with trying to put the, put the Jersey barriers up with the ice and whatnot that was there. He said if you put them there, they're gonna be more in the road than they would be off. I said, well, I'd use a little bit of salt and try to melt it off. Temperatures were still bouncing around, so I'd like to hope that you get them in there within the week.
I feel confident to remove this from our agenda, that he'll get it done.
Okay.
Sounds good. 7th Street?
That's still pending, but I do expect it to be on the June warrant.
Okay.
We can probably remove that as well unless we have an update.
Okay, we have a spot in the warrant for that, do you?
Yes.
Towards the tail end, yep, okay. Over draft ordinances, or draft ordinances, sorry?
So this was, just to kind of follow up what we discussed in the, in the workshop hour, so the road committee is all set. We were gonna reach out to the road, the road committee ordinance you guys are okay with. We were going to ask the road committee, I think we decided that we did email it to the road committee. We haven't gotten any input back, we'll find out if they're planning on having a meeting. But first thing tomorrow, I'll send them the road commissioner one as well. And maybe between those two documents, they'll decide to have a meeting and see if we can get any input before the public hearing from them. And then kind of all go into it together if they have thoughts on it.
Okay.
So I'll email that out in the morning.
Sounds good.
Right.
Special town meeting results. This is the school?
Yes.
Okay, it was held last week, that's why we had no meeting last week. They did have their special town meeting for the school budget. All the items on there passed, didn't they?
Yes.
There was nothing that didn't pass. So, the school is set now to move ahead for another year. I want to thank the school committee for all the work that they did on the budget and for the warrant and finance committee members and that went down and sat on that as well. I think it was, once again, it was a good, good run, good run special town meeting, it all went well, everything passed. What else I can say on it?
No.
No, anything else, anything general? Nope, good.
That's great.
Okay. Let's see. New business. Excise tax policy.
So we have a policy that was adopted in 2012 and amended in 2013 that basically says that any person that is a recipient of a Purple Heart plate or a DV Disabled Vet plate that is 100% service-connected, being paid at 100%, is exempt from excise. And that's a policy that was put into place several years back. I believe we have three or four people in town that actually, you know, benefit from this and they are very appreciative. I ran into a situation with an individual today that he is 100% service-connected, disabled. He is paid at 100%. And just to, so I can throw it out there, if you're familiar with this, they have a summary of benefits that the VA issues them and when we make them exempt, we attach a copy of that, you know, covering up how much their monthly pay is and their social. We, we keep a copy of that attached to our copy of the motor vehicle registration, so when we get audited and it says exempt, the auditor can see why, why we didn't collect it. So anyways, I'm bringing this to you because it says in here that said veteran must be either a Purple Heart recipient or disabled vet and they have to be 100%. The individual that I spoke to today really didn't want to have one of those plates. He has regular veteran plates, so I guess I put some, I thought about it and I, you know, I feel like that really should be his choice. So I've added in a line that I'm asking if the board will consider. So, nothing as far as eligibility changes, he still has to be 100% service-connected, he still has to be paid at 100%. But it's gonna, but it's gonna say said veteran must also be the recipient of a disabled vet license plate with class code DV or regular veteran plate with class code VT on the state of Maine Town of Acton registration. So we're just adding in that, you know, if he's a disabled, he or she is a disabled vet, but they choose to carry just the regular VT plate, assuming they meet all the other ones, they could still qualify for it.
Okay.
BT is a veteran plate?
BT is a veteran.
Okay.
Right.
So if they wanted, so if they wanted to have a farm plate, for instance?
They wouldn't qualify.
They wouldn't qualify, even though they're 100%
I mean, the way that it's written now, it's only on veteran plates. And I think that this opens it up enough, I mean, because they're, because most
Right, because they're both, yeah.
Okay.
And the difference there too is that if they have regular veteran plates, they are gonna have to pay the $35 registration fee to the, to the state of Maine, whereas disabled vet plates, the state does not charge them. And he understands that difference. And I just want to make sure I'm saying this clearly, for the thousands of veteran plates that we have out there, you still have to be 100% service-connected, disabled and being paid at that. So this is not just anybody with veteran plates. We're just giving him the option, we're giving people the option to not need, to not have to display that they're 100% disabled because, you know, some people don't want to do that.
Great. Okay.
So that's the only change in the policy.
Okay.
Here's the old one if you wanted to see it.
That's okay. Yeah, no, I think that's
Or a regular veteran, okay.
Yeah, no, I think that's fine. That's fine. Okay, what's your wishes?
I'll make a motion to sign the updated excise tax exemption policy for the Town of Acton.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to sign the excise tax exemption policy for the Town of Acton. Any further discussion? None? Okay, call for vote, all in favor, all opposed. Thank you. Actually, I'm gonna need those, never mind. Uh, let's see, okay, Lakeside Drive?
So Lakeside Drive, our association has filled out an Article 43 application. If it's okay, I'd like to have Leslie come up and help talk through this. So, I confirmed with her before the meeting that this is the one that we've paid out to already, right? They received funds, they, they went through the whole process with the road committee and through the board of selectmen and they were appropriated funds and the treasurer cut that. We were kind of just starting to have the conversation towards the end of the workshop whether you guys agreed to $3,000 per fiscal, per fiscal year? Per road association, per what? I mean, that was kind of the gray area that we started to talk about.
My understanding when just selectmen voted on that, it was per fiscal year.
Per fiscal year, yep.
With a $3,000 cap, so anything that, you know, after, after our town meeting, the work
They could reapply.
The work would need to be done after that point for another $3,000.
Well, and that's the, the little, the gray area, I think, because I, I agree with her that what was definitely said was $3,000 per fiscal year and we can certainly go back and, and watch the tape and I, I could be misunderstanding. I don't recall there any being, any discussion that the work had to be done, but it, but it makes sense that she's saying that, you know. So the question is, let's just say they had $10,000 worth of work that's been approved and done. Can they for the next three years, you know, apply for 3,000 each? Or does the work have to be done in that fiscal year that they're applying for reimbursement from?
I would think it would have to be in that fiscal year.
We, because we didn't, I don't think we, I don't think you discussed it.
I mean, that would be my intention, would be
So we might want to just clarify that for, for future.
And one per
So up to $3,000 for work in that fiscal year and per fiscal year payout.
So if they had work to be done in 2019
The road committee is, is also tasked with going out and verifying that the work is actually done.
Right.
So, I mean, it sort of would follow that it would need to be done in that fiscal year.
Right, right.
Okay, so with that being said, I, and if that's what the board isn't supporting, we'll contact, I'll contact Joe and let him know the clarity of that and let him resubmit after the fiscal year if he, so chooses.
Yeah, but the work would need to be done after
Well, that's what I'm gonna tell him, right?
Right.
Yeah. So at this point, there's nothing to apply for, right?
Right.
Because he's already been paid for last year.
Last year.
Yeah.
So he's gotta wait for the work to happen and reapply.
So they were paid for, so this is a new application then, is that what I'm understanding this is?
It's a new application.
Okay.
Because again, it wasn't clear from anybody that when, you know, I mean, when the work had to be done, but if that's the direction of the board, we just need to
As long as it was after July 1st of 2018, wasn't it? Didn't we have to?
Well, they got paid for last year, this is their second application, right.
Yep. Yep, that would be
Only one a year.
Yep. Yep. Okay. Okay.
Can I just clarify something? They could submit two if they hadn't been paid 3,000.
As long as it doesn't
So say that they, they did one piece of work in the fall for 1,500, they could apply for that and then another 1,500 in the spring, they could apply a second time for the total of the 3,000.
Yeah, total of 3,000, yeah, in one fiscal year.
In one, right.
So the work to be done and no more than 3,000 in the same fiscal year.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, United Way?
We just put this on there so that you could hear. United Way of York County sent the, the Town of Acton $150 for funds for fuel and they're, they asked specifically that it be non-low-income home energy assistance. So essentially they were looking for us to, to put this towards fuel on somebody that doesn't qualify for general fuel assistance, so the receipt and everything, it's just a nice letter from the town and I wanted to
Nice, great.
Let you know they did that and we did disperse it.
Okay. Okay, now we're into item D that we added, which is the liquor license, the, finishing up with the liquor licenses from the hearing that we had at 5 o'clock tonight. We'll stat out with Iron Tails Enterprises, DBA Iron Tail Saloon. We had the public hearing tonight, we had no adverse comments from anyone. We did do police reports on it, there was nothing that stood out on that. So, I guess at this point
Uh-oh.
Yeah, uh-oh.
You're getting called in?
I think the weather changed in Rollins, but So, I guess, what's your wishes on the, on the Iron Tail Saloon?
Make a motion to sign the liquor license for Iron Tail Saloon.
Okay.
I just have a question.
Sure.
As I'm, I'm just looking at this one and it asks to have this written down and it's not written here. Is that a requirement?
Can I take a peek at it?
You know, if not, that's
Let me take a peek, what you got?
Didn't know if you needed it on that one, that's all.
All right. Is applicant a corporation liability? Yes, it's police
The food and the, it was asked.
Oh, as far as the amounts?
Yeah, does that need to be in there?
It should be filled in, I can get that for you. It should be filled in, I can get that for you. I can't imagine it's much different than last year. It's total food and liquor sales.
All right.
Yep, I can get that. So if you wanna make the motion pending, I fill those numbers in, that's fine, or he'll come fill them in. Good catch, Kimberly.
Okay, sure. And we also make these, usually when we make a motion on these, it's pending all taxes and, and fees are paid.
Um, what, real estate taxes? You've never done that.
No, maybe not real estate, but whatever.
Well, they've paid the fees, the receipts are attached.
Okay.
They had to do that before we even scheduled the public hearing.
Okay.
I'll edit my motion to sign the liquor license pending they fill in the number two.
Yeah, number two. The food and liquor totals.
Food and liquor totals.
And I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded, with the, with the addition of making sure they fill in the information. Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed? It's spotted here someplace, I think.
I can find it quicker if you wanna move on to that one. It's at the very top.
Give me a sticky note. Okay, the second one, which we also held a special, a public hearing tonight, KB Enterprises, Restaurant Enterprises, DBA The Shed, this is Willie's Aisle Room. Same type of thing here, police, police reports have been done, there's no, nothing earth-shattering on it, so, what is your wishes?
I'll make a motion to sign the liquor license for KB Enterprises, doing business as The Shed Restaurant.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Sign the license. Any further discussion? Call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed? Just down to one of those three lines down there?
Yep, just sign and print, please.
I'm answering my text.
Let me take that for you.
The call? That would be nice.
I'm not going out to plow, but I'll tell them that you'll be with them in a few minutes.
That was my boss that called, so.
Right, figure that out. And, oops.
Well, I was mainly telling that to the public.
Oh.
Not just taking random-
Well, you said the weather, Rollinsford weather changed.
That's what I'm wondering, yeah.
Almost took the snow tires off.
What's that?
We almost took the snow tires off. They're off one of the cars.
See, that's why I just don't put any on, you don't have to worry about that.
I'm still refusing to put my plow back on my pickup, so.
It'll melt fast, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Public comment, anyone from the public have anything they'd like to speak about tonight? Nope, we got a mass, mass crowd coming out.
Cindy Hart, Road Committee, Seventh Street. The Road Committee wrote the road ordinance, and last road we did was Peacock Road. We were called upon and expect to walk the road, check the culverts, and make a recommendation to the selectmen and to the warrant, as we did last time. We haven't heard anything, but let us know, and we'll take, we'll do the walkthrough, and just like we've done before, and make sure it's up to standards.
Thank you.
Yep, yep.
Is that direction?
I don't know what you've done so far.
Have you completed?
Well, no, I mean, not to interrupt, but so-
Application yet, right?
No, they do, Seventh Street has, but we talked about this, and what you told me, we went over the Road Committee, the road ordinance, and there was nothing in there. It talks about the road commissioner, it talks about the engineers. We went through that, and you guys told me not to send it to the Road Committee.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we did before, and made the recommendations for Peacock, and it needs to be measured, and you need to be sure that it's exactly right. We wrote it, I think we're the best ones to go take a look at it.
The road commissioner and the engineer did that?
That's what they're supposed to do, based on the ordinance. I mean, the Road Committee isn't mentioned in there, that's why I went to them and asked them what they wanted, how they wanted it handled.
Well, I think we're very good at it, so if you'd like us to take a look, we would be happy to.
Thank you.
Hi, Joyce Backshee. About the two liquor permits that were issued tonight, three of us, Susan, Mia, Karen McManus, and I have been taking care of these citizen petitions, and as of today, we do have a hundred and eighty signatures, which was fifteen percent of the last gubernatorial collection, election, and that is what we are required to have. We're not turning them in because we're going up to about a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty-five, because so many people, oh, I'd love to sign that for you. I said, well, my spiel always was, because people look at you like this when you have a petition, I said, I have three nosy questions. Are you a resident? Did you vote in the last gubernatorial election? Are you a registered voter? And they say, yes! The answer is no! And Jennifer is the one who knows that, or someone in your office. So we wanna get more than what we need, because we expect that we'll have a few lines going through. But we've had a lot of good feedback for, from, you know, and I did find a lot of women saying, oh, my goodness, what would I do with my husband on a Sunday in football season?
We did, we have gotten a few calls, too, and, just to kinda clarify, I guess, on the record, so, you know, they don't have to be registered in the last gubernatorial. It's a question you're, you're welcome to ask, but they don't have to. As long as they're a registered voter, they could be inactive. They don't have to be a registered voter in the last gubernatorial. The number came from, that fifteen percent that you have to get is based on the number of voters that participated in the last, that's just the number the state uses, but they don't have to have voted. As long as they're an active voter in Acton, active in Acton, they could, maybe they haven't voted in four or five years. The state decides when to purge and when to remove inactive voters, but I just wanna go on the record for saying, they didn't have to vote in that last one.
Jennifer, as you know, because you deal with it every day, like most states-
No, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just telling you-
No, no, we're not disagreeing with you, but like most state rules and this, that, and the other thing, that's as clear as mud, so we're getting more than what we need.
I just wanted to say that the clerk's office said that. The other piece, too, was, we've had a couple of calls about it, just wanting to make sure that people understand that this isn't, this is something that the state reached out to the town of Acton for, and that the, when the town of Acton approved liquor in, in Acton, it was only six days a week at that point. Eventually, a law changed, and Maine became seven days a week, and Acton just started selling on seven days, because they had already voted on six days, and they just assumed the seventh day. So this is an oversight back from the eighties, that Acton never went back and asked to vote for the seventh day, so this is nothing that any individual, they're doing this on behalf of the Board of Selectmen-
Yes.
-to get this on the warrant for those people, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that, Joyce, Susan, and Karen.
Leslie Berlin, Road Committee. Last Thursday, Cindy, Joyce, and I went to the stream crossing class, and it was very, it was very- Last Thursday, Cindy, Joyce, and I went to the stream crossing class, and it was very informative, and I'm glad we went. We, you know, were able to make a number of very, very good contacts, which could only help us in the future. I sent an email already to all of you today, they released the funds for the road crossing grants. We have eight weeks to apply for these grants. So there's a lot of work to be done. I've already talked to Dave Langley about some of the assistance that we will need, because we, while we don't need the engineering done before, before we apply, we do need to be able to cost out what these culverts will cost in order to apply for the grant. And the state is allowing eight percent of the grant to go toward engineering, so we would get some help with the engineering. So anyway, I just wanted to update the board on what was happening, and-
Okay.
Good. You've talked with David?
I talked to Dave, yeah.
All right, so you need to talk with Joe, too?
Yeah, he was here earlier, so.
Will you ask the chair to call a meeting? I mean, on Monday or some, or, I don't know what to say when, but-
I, I sent, I guess, I sent emails to everyone, so he did get an email that this had been, this money had been released. Do you know if, when he's gonna be back?
Oh, he's not here.
No, I saw the town, he'll be back in a couple of weeks. We can contact him and have a meeting before he gets back, if, you know, if something-
We'll give you a chance to discuss that and look at the two drafts that the board is proposing that they'd like your opinion on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Because eight weeks isn't that much time, so.
There's not, there's not, there's not a lot of time.
Eight weeks isn't enough time, a lot of time, and the public, public hearing is on the twenty-second, so it really leaves you just next week to meet, so we can have your input on the ordinances.
Well, I don't think you want, you, I don't believe that you would want us to wait on, on putting together these applications for a grant.
No.
So, I wasn't even talking about the ordinances, I was talking about applying for grants.
Just remember, there's a, there's a clause, there's a warrant article in every town meeting regarding grants and the treasurer and the process that has to follow, so you can't just go and apply for a grant. You wanna make sure that you talk to Michelle and look at that warrant article.
All right. These, these, actually, excuse me, we were, we shared notes. These grants can be applied for by citizens.
Okay, so you're not doing it on behalf of the town?
They are, you're doing it for your town, but you're doing it as a private citizen. The money would not come to me or anybody else, especially, I'm not on the Road Committee.
Right.
I went to learn more stuff and actually had a great dinner out in Portland that day.
Yeah, I mean, Michelle would only be helpful, and I just don't want some, I don't wanna see a hiccup along the way, so just mention it.
And these, these grants are, the way they are written, they are answers. Question one, how big is the culvert?
Okay, so.
There's one answer to that. Question two, blah, 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 there's an answer. So when they award the grants, they can look at any grant from any town, from any person, and compare them. Answer one, answer ones, answer twos, all the way across. And they are not asking for exact monies on anything, but, you know, you get, because they would not take, I don't think they would take even, if I went to Dave, Dave Langley and said, I've got a culvert on West Shore Drive, what do you think it would take to replace this? And he can give me a number. That's fine with them, but that's not, we all know that's not really what the number's gonna be, because Dave's not doing engineering, he's not studying this or that, or what kind of a culvert is gonna be used. But they will take that as a starting point. And this money has been building up for two years. I think they have over-
They have, five thousand dollars was released, and they're expecting to have another amount released again this year.
More than five thousand dollars, I think?
Five million.
Five million.
Yeah, you said five thousand, I'm like, oh, that's thin.
Five million, yeah.
Wow.
Is this a matching grant type thing, or?
There is, it's not exact, it's not a hundred percent a matching grant. It, you have to put some money in, you've gotta put an iron in the fire.
They are allow-
It might be ten thousand dollars on a fifty thousand dollar project.
They're allowing a maximum grant of ninety-five thousand dollars per project. I also showed pictures of the eighth road culvert that I took in the fall, and two members, two, two gentlemen, DEP, looked at those pictures and said that this culvert is in imminent danger of failure. So that's what DEP is telling us about, just one of our culverts, so.
Yeah, Army Corps of Engineers said it isn't closed yet, when you saw it, so, but I would suggest, when these come up, anybody go, because you don't have to be on a, you don't have to be a road commissioner, you don't have to be a road committee person, Lake Association people can be fabulous for.
It's not for private roads.
But it's not for private roads, but, you know, there are still, you know, we have a Lake, Lake Association, but we don't, I don't live on a private road.
Right.
So, you know, there are different places like that.
So, I mean, it's-
It was a, it was a good thing.
I mean, we have eight weeks, so, I mean, it's, we can sit on our hands and, and wait for the time to elapse and not try to take advantage of it. It's up to you guys.
Well, I don't see any, none of the three of us are gonna reply, so it's up to the Road Committee to attack it.
Get a meeting together, so that we can get the two road commissioners together, so that they know what they need to do.
We can give you copies of all our information.
And that was my next question, was, do you have the forms and stuff?
Do you have more than what you emailed us?
We took the whole class.
We took the whole class, we, we, we have.
Do we have a whole, a whole booklet of stuff?
Like the application, do you, I was gonna say, could we get a copy?
Application is online.
It's online.
And I looked at it briefly last fall, when, when I first spoke to DEP, thinking that money might be available.
I was, I would say the first order would be to call a meeting with the road commissioners and make sure everybody's on board moving forward. I'm all for it.
Oh, yeah, I'm all for it.
I'm all for it, I just feel like-
I know that, I know that Dave, Dave Langley is on board, because he says he will help, help us in whatever way he can. I have yet to see Joe at a Road Committee meeting, so I can't say anything about as to what he, you know?
Okay.
What he would do and how he would feel.
Get ahold of him, let us know.
I'd say start the process and work forward. Get ahold of Michelle, get the information from there. If there's a chance that we're gonna get it, we're gonna need to know how much is the town's gonna have to put in, because that basically needs to be a warrant article.
I mean, depending on what kinda number, right, and I, and I was trying to find the article real quick, I'll show it to you afterwards, and it's just that she has to be involved, not so much involved in the process, she has to have a copy of it. Ran into some hiccups with Goat Hill, so I just don't want that to happen to you guys from starting from the beginning.
You don't want anything to happen, you're gonna cut anybody off anywhere.
But if you're looking for an amount for a warrant article, yeah, I mean, we've given the warrant and finance, there are warrants several times.
Yeah.
It doesn't sound like it would, the deadlines before the town meeting anyways.
Oh, so you would have to, how much, oh, right, so you would have to, either have a special town meeting, or-
Most likely, that's what we have to do.
If you had to come up with the money, unless it's in one of the road accounts, but-
Right.
Right.
I mean, you know, I think, I think there are ways, even on their side of the coin, that you could get around that. In other words, it could go after the end of June, you know?
Oh, you mean, as far as them wanting their deposit after then?
Oh, you're right.
If that's the case, then you definitely, I mean, warrant article-
It'd be a whole easier way to work with things, you know?
Because you can apply-
You get it on this warrant.
Yeah. I mean, the wording in one of our articles states that we can't apply for grants that are gonna encumber the town.
Right, that's the article I was, I'm trying to find, so you can see the wording.
But, that just means you can't, someone can't go out and arbitrarily-
Exactly.
Get, get, get a grant and say, here's, here's the money, oh, by the way, we need ten grand to go with it.
Right.
You know, we just need to have it all up front. It can be done, you know, it just has to be done.
Right, well, I mean, they're not gonna, they're not gonna release the money unless the town, uh-
Agrees.
Owns something, it's, you know, takes it, carries it.
This has got to be the loosey-gooseyest one I've ever seen. This has got to be the loosey-gooseyest thing I've ever seen.
I just don't wanna get into it, I don't wanna lose something on a technicality.
No, no, exactly, but like I say, the loosey-goosey, it is, would not be impossible for a municipality to get more than one grant in a year.
Really?
You could, you know, like, take care, you know, that size, it maybe, it's not coming up with ten thousand dollars, maybe, you know, ten thousand here, well, that's not bad, but gee, thirty thousand here, but thirty thousand on a ninety-five thousand dollar project isn't a, a bad idea either.
No, it's all great.
So, there's a lot to percolate.
Let me read you this real, real quick, so, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to make application and execute any documents related to any grants or donations, to accept any such grants or donations, or any fees and appropriate such funds for their designated use so long as they do not require matching funds or encumber the town in any way, the Treasurer shall be notified of grant applications and copies shall be kept and filed on the Treasurer's office."
Yep, this would fall under encumbering the town, 'cause it's not matching funds either.
So, somehow, we probably, we need a rewording of that, because that basically says right there, don't go out and look for any grants.
Well, that's why Goat Hill had to do it the way they did, where Three Rivers fronted the money, and they paid it out, because they had to have a percentage down.
But on things like this, we don't-
Well, you've got the warrant, we can make it however you'd like it to say.
I'd say, I'd say kick that to the attorney and see what he can come up with for better wording, I mean, that's been in that article for how many years, a number of years?
It's a standard one, right?
Yeah, standard, yeah, it's been there probably fifteen, twenty years, so it might be time to-
So, you're looking for it to say something essentially that if the town supports matching funds or encumbering it, it's okay to still apply for it?
Right, but some, yeah, apply for them, but somehow, um, don't accept, somehow, somehow protect the town from accepting the money, if in fact, we have to, without town approval, I guess, of putting the funds up, the match, the matching money, something to that effect.
But that's, that's, be careful on those words, 'cause like I say, it doesn't have to be matching.
Well, however, yeah, but I mean-
But they never specified how much, um, the town would need to do, um-
Okay, so we may not have to do any?
Well, they weren't precluding, they weren't precluding that you could use other grants, to like a three nineteen grant, to offset what the, the town would be required to put up, so.
At the least of this, if we just have a learning experience from it, and we see where we can get money, whether it is the town going through it, or a citizens panel, or a committee-
Yep. Yep.
We're coming out ahead.
Good, yeah, yeah, definitely.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Very much.
Anyone else in the public? Come right up to the mic here.
Hey, Eric, I've never seen you on the side of the camera.
This is Eric, I'm from APAT, um, tonight's meeting wasn't-
He's the person on the other end of the camera.
Yeah, usually.
He's the one on the other end of the camera every night.
Um, so tonight's meeting wasn't live, and I figured out why, one of our wires out back there is starting to split up.
Okay.
So, I shook the wires a little bit, and the live feed came on for about thirty seconds, and it dropped out again, so, we do have a spare wire in the studio, it just needs to be swapped out, that's why tonight's meeting wasn't live, so, you can see the metal fibers starting to, to break up, so.
Good job, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Hey, anyone else in the public?
Robin Ham, I won't beat you up as much as I did the fire and warrants last night, but, when we need to look for money, we need to look at all departments, that's even the school department, don't get me wrong, I love the kids, but, as your job and the Finance Committee's job is to look out at a whole town, not just certain departments. We, as Fire and Road Commissioners, have held the line many, many, many years, school, back in the day, when we only had a four room, we needed, we needed to hold the line for them, now, that, my opinion, we, they need to start holding the line for the rest of the departments, that's my comment.
Thank you, Robin. Anyone else?
I was just thinking, I was just thinking that.
Okay, announcements, uh, medium, meetings are on the website as usual, there was an Extravaganza, is that up here at the church?
Uh, it's actually here at the Town Hall, and I think it's a joint effort.
Okay, Extravaganza, Saturday, April thirteenth, from eleven thirty to three, uh, taxes are due, property taxes are due on the sixteenth of the month, Library Water Talk, April seventeenth, you wanna say anymore on that?
It's at two PM here.
There we go, it's the two Pats that I didn't say from what was written. I thought you went expelling.
Here at the Town Hall, well, it's invasive aquatic species.
Oh, okay, that's a good one. Public hearing here on the twenty-second, and that is for the Road Commissioner and Road Committee, uh, job descriptions, correct? Great, okay, that's all we got here, do you have anything?
No.
No, anything?
I don't.
No, that's it, do I hear a meeting adjourned, anything, Jennifer?
No, sir.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Moving to second to adjourn, all in favor, all opposed, good night, all.